Budget for our road improvement program. Today is Thursday, August 20th, 2020. It's approximately 10:04 a.m. And I'd just like to say for the record that this is the first of its kind, a video conference, due to the current COVID-19 conditions that are facing the county, but really the entire international community in the form of a pandemic. So we will begin the budget hearing, and I'd like to call the meeting to order. So I might want to start by just saying a few remarks, and I know the other commissioners also have a couple of remarks they'd like to make. But to start it off, I'd like to say good morning. I'm Greg Jamian, and I'm the chairman of the Board of Commissioners for the Road Commission for Oakland County. I'd like to welcome all of you here today, and I don't know all of who are on this video conference, but it is virtually, and you know, the entire public is welcome to the hearing. We've sent out the proper notices, the proper links to participate in this meeting and this hearing for the proposed 2021 RCOC budget. In particular, I'd like to acknowledge any elected officials, appointed representatives, and members of the road commission staff. Do we have any public officials online? Is there anybody else that I might have missed? Okay, well, I'd like to introduce the people from the virtual dais, and we have with us Vice Chairman of the Road Commission, Commissioner Ron Foltz.
Good morning.
Good morning, Ron, and Commissioner Andrea Lalonde.
Good morning.
Good morning, Andrea. Managing Director Dennis Kohler and Deputy Secretary Clerk Shannon Miller.
Morning.
Good morning. And Gary, we'll get to you in a second. Only you, too. We three road commissioners are responsible for studying policy, issuing rulings, and providing guidance for the staff of the road commission, and are committed to fulfilling our statutory requirement that the road commission provide reasonably safe and convenient roads to the public. While we don't know yet what the full impact of the state's response to the coronavirus will be on next year's budget, I would like to report that the state of the road commission is currently strong. We have great management in place. Until the pandemic hit, we were financially and finally making a real difference in our road surfaces after years of funding deficiencies. We are hopeful that the state legislature will not cut state general road funding in the coming year as a way to fill the budget hole created by the pandemic, and we are making that sentiment known to our friends in the legislature. The budget presented today, which is approximately $161 million, reflects our policy mandates to the road commission staff. In particular, we have continued to insist that safety be the most important consideration when selecting and designing major road construction projects. As you will hear shortly from Managing Director Dennis Kohler, this budget reflects our adamant commitment that we devote as much of our funding as possible to improving the condition and safety of our road. At this point, I would like to invite Vice Chairman Foltz to offer any comments he has on the budget. Ron?
Thank you, Chairman Jamian. As we all know, budgets are about as interesting as watching a rerun on TV for the fifth time. However, a tightly controlled budget is without a doubt a true indicator of a healthy organization. Whether it is a company, city, or road agency, future planning for spending is of critical importance. This coming 2021 budget is estimated to be about $11 million less than pre-COVID projections. That's about 8% under what we had planned for in our three-year revolving budget numbers. While that's a lot of money, we likely will not be able to invest into our road improvement programs. We will still do our absolute best to maintain Oakland County road system to the highest level we possibly can. Road Commission for Oakland County is responsible for almost 3,000 miles of roads our families travel on every day. With 444 dedicated men and women supporting the safest streets in the state, we promise to do our very best regardless of what finances or Mother Nature has in store for us. Thank you, Chairman Jamian.
Well, thank you, Commissioner Foltz. Next, and well said, by the way, if you make note of those remarks. Next, I'd like to introduce our newest commissioner and one of our future stars, Andrea Lalonde. Commissioner Lalonde, would you please say a few words?
That's a lot to live up to, but thank you, Chairman Jamian and Vice Chairman Foltz. As I reflect back on the past two years of my time with the commission, I am constantly amazed at the sheer breadth of talent that this organization holds. This budget process highlights the professionalism and the continued high standards set by management and executed by all members of this very diverse group of hardworking individuals. Faced with unprecedented financial challenges presented by the continuing pandemic, the management team has prepared a modified budget to adapt to these anticipated shortfalls. I applaud the team for adapting and adjusting as necessary while not placing undue burden on the team members at the heart of the organization. As we look forward, I wish to express my desire that we continue in our efforts to improve the road system that serves our great community while also respecting and rewarding the workforce that keeps that system alive. I wish to also express my hopes that we continue to diversify our staff and make every effort to provide career opportunities to all members of our community regardless of race and gender, and in fact, put into action a plan to expand our workforce demographic as vacancies become available. I look forward to a successful 2021 season, and thank you all again for your efforts over the past year. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Andrea, for those words. Now for a detailed analysis of where we are and where we are going, here's Dennis Kohler, our Managing Director of the Road Commission. Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a brief note before I start, and for everybody who is on here, make a note that we are recording this, and it'll probably be available on our website later today or tomorrow. So just to make sure everybody who's on is notified that we're recording this. Members of the Board of Road Commissioners, elected and appointed representatives, road commission staff, and ladies and gentlemen, thank you for taking the time to attend virtually, or first virtually, one, the Road Commission for Oakland County's public hearing for our proposed 2021 budget. I'm pleased to present to you the proposed 2021 road commission budget. As we know, these are unprecedented times. The pandemic has impacted both the road commission as a whole and this proposed budget. Before I talk about the impact of the pandemic on the budget, however, I'd like to briefly discuss what we've had, what we've done to respond to the situation. During the lockdown, first, in order to reduce the number of staff present in our maintenance garages at any given time, we varied the work schedules for our garage staff. No more than half the usual staff was present at most times. We did this in a way, though, that allowed our crews to continue to work to ensure we got the critical work done that is needed to keep our roads open and safe. At the same time, about 80 of our office staff were working from home, and I will say that we've continued to allow staff to work from home, those who can. Of course, I have to thank all of our staff for strictly adhering to the COVID-19 protocols, wearing a mask when appropriate, social distancing, and frequently washing their hands. As a result of this diligence, we've had only a few employees who have contracted the virus and none who have contacted it while on the job at the road commission. And in fact, we are the essential workers that no one thinks about, but everyone depends on. We provide a critically important service, keeping the roads open and safe so that other essential workers can get to their jobs, so people can get to their doctors, to the hospital, and to the grocery stores, so freight can be delivered to stores, hospitals, and other critical establishments, and so our economy can gradually come back to life. Frankly, without road agencies continuing to maintain the roads throughout these times, it would have been very difficult for other essential workers to do their job.
Okay.
I still have more. Concerning this proposed budget, my biggest concern and greatest unknown is how the state legislature chooses to fill the anticipated $3 billion hole in next year's budget. As you may know, when the legislature approved $1.2 billion in increased road funding back in 2015, they decided that 50% of the new revenue, or 600 million, could come from the state general fund. Legislature opted to phase in the new dollars from the general fund so that 2021 was supposed to be the first full year of the 600 million. My fear is the legislature will choose to redirect all or part of these dollars to address the pandemic-caused $3 billion hole in the state 2021 budget. If the state redirects all or some of these road dollars away from roads, it will certainly have a significant impact on this budget. The proposed budget we are presenting today has already been reduced by $11 million in anticipation of lower fuel tax revenues and COVID-related cuts. Ideally, the state will restore some of the money we anticipate being cut. If that were to happen, we are nimble enough to quickly add funds to our road improvement program. However, though, I hope we never have to use it, we also have a contingency plan should the state cuts be deeper. If that is the case, we are prepared to make additional cuts to our programs and to do so without cutting staff. Regardless of what happens with this budget, the one thing that will not change in this agency, and is at the direction of the Board of Commissioners, will remain intensely committed to safety, that of our customers using the roads and as well our employees' safety. As presented, the budget calls for more than $35 million to be spent on projects expected to be under construction in 2021. That includes road widens, reconstructions, major resurfacing, simple resurfacing, gravel road paving, roundabout construction, culvert replacement, and concrete repair. Barring additional cuts from the state, this proposed budget will allow us to continue to improve the conditions of the roads across the county while also providing critical maintenance of the roads and bridges, traffic signal signs, guardrails, crosswalks, and all other important elements of our road system. Finally, I'd like to thank our partners and local government and the road commission staff. Our partners and local government, the cities, villages, and townships, as well as the Oakland County Board of Commissioners and the county executive have continued to support us, work with us, and in many cases, invest in the roads. The county in particular has continued to supply us with the personal protective equipment needed to fight the pandemic while also recognizing us as essential workers and deeming the road commission eligible for Federal Care Act funding. These partnerships are vital to what we do, and without their help and support and funding, we could not adequately serve our mutual constituents. I thank our partners. And similarly, without the hard work of road commission staff, we would not be able to accomplish all we do. This agency has a highly committed and dedicated workforce that is at all levels extremely talented and always professional, and I thank the staff for all and everything they do. With that, I turn the meeting back over to you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Dennis. And in all businesses, or agencies, or organizations, the culture starts from the top, and the momentum starts at the top, and you're at the top, and you know, I'm sure I speak for all the other commissioners. We want to thank you for your leadership during these times, and we appreciate everything you do. Next person I'd like to introduce is the Deputy Managing Director and County Highway Engineer, Gary Petrovich. He's sometimes behind the scenes, but not really because he plays such an important role in what we do here at the road commission. So I'd like to ask Gary to review the list of road projects that we plan to construct in 2020. Gary?
Hopefully you can see that?
We can.
Excellent. This is, as we have so many changes with COVID and everything going on, this is one of our new things this year. Now we're going electronic on our road improvement display. So we took advantage of this opportunity through this method, and it'll be our first year we actually display this in electronic format. So this is, all right, so this is the overview of our road improvement program this year. Once again, we have another exciting year going on. We look forward to a lot of good things happening, and we certainly have the flexibility, as Dennis mentioned, regarding if additional monies do get added to our program, we can add to it. But this is our base program we're beginning with now. We're going to zoom in on the Upper Holly area right now, where the first project I'll talk about is the Fish Lake Road over Shihawassee. That's a new culvert we'll be installing there. A large project up in the Groveland area next year will be our paving of Farron Road from Grange Hall to Groveland Road. There'll be a paving of the gravel road up there, which will be a major improvement. As we move over to the north-central part of the county here, right in the center there, obviously, the first thing we want to take a look at is the Independence Township overlays. This is the Road Village project they passed several years ago. We're in year, it will be in year three of this next year of the four-year program. We'll be doing White Lake, Flemings Lake, Walters, along with Clarkston Road, and a piece of Estin next year as well. We'll also be installing a new roundabout up at Oakwood, at Sashawatt Oak Hill Road as well. Over in the Orient area, we'll be completing the final stretch here of Baldwin Road from Morgan to Craigery this fall, and into next spring, we'll be finishing up this major widening project as well as doing all the landscaping associated with that project. Down in the Waterford area, Walton Boulevard from Dixie to Sashaw, we're doing a 3R project, a major resurfacing of that segment of road that's been needed for a number of years now. Move over in the southwest part of the county, we'll look at Union Lake Road, at Hayes Drain, we'll be installing a new culvert there. In Farmington Hills, we'll also be installing a new culvert on Orchard Lake Road over the Rouge River. And over in Lion Township, we'll be getting a two-year construction project for the paving of, gravel road paving of Curry Road from Eight Mile to Ten Mile, which will include a roundabout at Eight Mile and Curry as well when that project is completed. Over in the southeast part of the county, up at the top, we'll start here at Adams Road from Square Lake to Lawn Lake. We have a major resurfacing 3R project on Adams Road. Over here, we have Maple Road, we have Inkster to Franklin, a major resurfacing as well as a culvert replacement along that segment. In the Bloomfield Birmingham area, we'll be resurfacing, major resurfacing of Cranbrook Road from 14 Mile to Maple. Down on 12 Mile and Southfield from Losser to Evergreen, we'll be doing a 4R complete reconstruction of that segment of road. Not shown on this map, but something we'll do, and we have a major concrete repair program that'll be included next year in Troy, which will include roads Big Beaver, John R., Crooks, and Livernoy will be upgraded with new concrete slab replacement. And then as part of our maintenance program as well, to mention through the maintenance department, we'll be continuing to do our overlay program, and overlay program will be at $2.5 million a year, a spot resurfacing at $1 million a year, and another $1 million in various concrete repairs across the county as well. So we'll have a busy year again next year, and we're looking forward to getting at it next year. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Deputy Director. Looks like a lot of work and all work that we need. I'd like to now ask Madam Clerk to read any written, we're going to go into public comments now and questions, so could the Clerk, please, read any written communications that we've received?
We have not received any written communications, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Then I'd like to thank you, Shannon, for that. I asked anyone wishing to speak in this open forum, which this is an open meeting, limit their comments to not longer than three to four minutes. Also, we welcome comments on any subjects related to the road commission, so please understand that we may refer a specific question or service request to the appropriate department rather than addressing them during this public hearing. For those who state such a question or request, you will receive a response from the respective road commission department. Is there anybody in the public now that would like to speak or bring on any topic or any issue?
Yes.
Could you please identify yourself? Okay. Am I correct to say that there's nobody that would like to comment or speak at this public hearing?
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, my name is Deborah Hodge Reeves. I'm a resident, living between Greensville and Southfield, Ten Mile and Mount Vernon. And I recognize that there's no road repairs in this area for 2020 or 2021. Could you tell me when they, our area might be on that repair list, because our roads are pretty bad over here?
Okay, I know the area well. Are you talking about a specific road?
Well, Mount Vernon is pretty bad, Pierce and Rutland particularly.
Okay, let me...
Mr. Chairman, those roads, and to Deborah, those roads are City of Southfield roads. They're not under the road commission jurisdiction.
Oh.
So City of...
Okay.
Yeah, now, I'd also like to say that, you know, we recently have done some improvements to the intersection of Ten and Southfield, and that was really a hot mess there for many years, and my belief that we worked on that recently, is that correct? The last couple of years?
Yes, we did a tight line last year from Greenfield over to Losser to Southfield.
Southfield.
Yeah.
And to provide the caller with some hope, we are planning a major renovation on Southfield Road in the future. I'm not going to say the near future, but there are plans to put a boulevard from Mount Vernon all the way to 13 Mile Road, and to beautify that whole region, that whole corridor, because that area you're talking about is the entry point to Oakland County. So a lot of attention in the future is going to be spent on that area that you're talking about, raising all property values, making that a really nice corridor in there. Can't give you a date on that at this point, but we are in active meetings on it, planning.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you very much. That was my concern, and I will contact, I guess, the City of Southfield to find out what their plans are.
Well, thank you so much for joining us.
Sure.
And you're welcome, if you're still on, you're welcome to attend any of our board meetings as well. They're open to the public.
Okay, well, I just happened to see this, get an announcement on my phone, and it was like three minutes to 10, so I was glad I was able to get on. I got a chance to hear from, you know, the people who are commissioners and managing directors and things like that, so it was very helpful to me. Thank you so much.
Well, thank you so much for joining us. Is there anybody else that would like to make a comment or bring a concern up? Anybody on the phone? Anybody on this conference? Okay. Hearing no further comments, I now close this public hearing, and I'd like to thank everybody that participated in this process with a heartfelt thank you. I know Craig Bryson spent a lot of time making this hearing happen, and many, many others, the people that were involved in the technology piece of what we did here today with the video conference. So if I didn't name your name, please know that all of us really thank you very much for your help and assistance during this public hearing. Is there any other questions, any of the commissioners or Dennis? Do you have any?
I'm all set, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, this public hearing is adjourned. Thank you very much. Be safe. Bye.
Nice job, Shannon. You got everything working.
Thank you.
Take care, everybody. Have a great weekend.
You, too.
Bye.
Bye.
Deborah Hodge Reeves.